Thank you, and welcome to the Rochester City School District Board of Education's September 9th Work Session and Consideration of Resolutions. We're going to jump right into the meeting, as I call it to order, for this evening's work session. I am going to actually start the meeting with the Mental Health Ad-Hoc Committee. At this time, I'll turn the mic over to Charisma, who will give us an update on that.
Good evening, thank you, President Simmons. Just as FYI, the Mental Health Ad-Hoc Committee is slated to begin next week, Wednesday, September the 17th. If you look at tonight's agenda, the list of committee members are on there under the public content. Thank you.
Okay, and Charisma, you're going to provide multiple, the presentation on multiple policies states?
Yes. Right, so for this month, the following policies are under review. Policies 4350, 4360, 4400, and 4513. All four policies followed the policy review process, as shown. These are the folks that contributed to the policy review process. So you have BEC, Board Staff, and Cabinet. As part of the standard operating procedure, all policies were sent to our advisory groups, district administration for review, and now is being forwarded for final recommendations to follow Policy 2410. Before I get to Policy 4350, Policy 4360 have no significant updates. Same with Policy 4513. And in Policy 4410, we wrote the first sentence to combine BEC's feedback and remove school chief as the day trip approver, so it would only fall into the principal. Going back to Policy 4350, this is looking for discussion on this from, excuse me. The discussion is, so the previous administration had recommended removing the sentence that said, "Develop a process to include a multicultural perspective that reflects multiple racial ethic, linguistic, and cultural perspectives into standard curriculum development for all subjects across all RCSD pre-K to 12 classrooms." And so the recommendation was to replace it with, "Schools will offer diversity with multiple cultures." And so because this was from the previous administration, just ensuring that the board and the current administration is okay moving this language forward, the second bullet. Okay, silence, I'm assuming is we're good?
Okay, thank you.
And then finally, these policies afforded out tonight would be voted on at the November Business Meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Charisma. So moving into the policies, we have policies again, 4350, 4360, 4400, and 4513. And at this time, I'm going to start with 4350, asking board members if they have any discussion around 4350 or recommendations. If not, we'll have the opportunity to move this forward to the business, yeah, the Business Meeting for Adoption. So, or the adoption process moving forward, should I say? So, motion to forward Policy 4350 to the Board Business Meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Vice President Malloy, seconded by Commissioner Patterson. This is open for discussion, if there are any concerns, questions. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? 4350 is moving forward. Motion to move Policy 4360 forward to the Board Business Meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Patterson, seconded by Vice President Malloy, open for discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 4360 is moving forward to the Business Meeting. Motion to forward Policy 4400 to the Board Business Meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Vice President Malloy, seconded by Commissioner Patterson, open for discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? 4400 moves forward to the Board Business Meeting. Motion to forward Policy 43, um, excuse me, 4513 to the Board Business Meeting.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Patterson, seconded by Vice President Malloy, open for discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Policy 4513 moves forward to the Board Business Meeting at this time. The next item on the agenda is regarding the Board Newsletter. We have the standard operating procedure and to approve the exhibit, which we've already circulated it. I've heard a little bit of feedback here and there, folks seem to enjoy it. I think we were looking to add some modifications. Were you going to go over the standard operating procedures, Charisma, at this time? Or we just, there are some modifications as far as, I'll open up the track changes. And as you look at the track changes, of course, those in red allow you to see some of the changes. I think there were modifications to the months to ensure that everyone had an opportunity to present. As commissioners have, will have a corner each month, and we'll cycle that way. Let me look and see if I can see the clean copy instead. Okay, so that would be, we've already had the August. We have October coming up with Commissioner Elliott. December would place Commissioner Patterson, February Griffin, April would be LeBron, and then June would be Santiago. Is that amenable to all commissioners at this time? We want to again make sure that as we go, close out the 2025 school year, that everyone has an opportunity to take part in newsletter if they so choose. Okay.
I just, I'm trying to find within the clean copy where that would be listed, because in the old copy, we did have it laid out that way. But it looks like.
Go to Exhibit A.
Yeah, I have the track changes up, but which one is Exhibit A? Because I have the newsletter standard operating procedure clean copy. Mine doesn't look like that. Yeah, I'm there. So you got this one?
Oh.
Why would this wait? Yes, you have to take this out of the, oh. Okay, got it, thank you.
And I apologize, this is specifically speaking to the commissioner's corner. So we've got a few things on here, but this is for the commissioner's corner and just how we have commissioners listed. So with that said, if we're going to move forward with that, just wanted to put that out there. Any questions or concerns?
No, I just want to clarify that the commissioner's corner piece got moved out of the operational standards, which makes sense, because it'll change as new commissioners rotate out. That's why I couldn't find it, thank you.
Yes. So at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to amend the Board Newsletter to, as the exhibit discussed, meaning the commissioner's corner would be amended on that letter.
So moved, motion.
Moved by Vice President Malloy, seconded by Commissioner Griffin, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're looking at the Board Calendar. This is regarding the Speaker's Forum. And so again, just another amendment to request. We have the calendar in front of us, and the October session, it looks like a few folks will be away for the annual CGCS conference. We want to make sure we have quorum or folks available to attend. What are we looking to modify this for? Hold on one second. I think we're looking to move this to the 21st, from the 21st to October 30th. Thank you. So I wanted to get the commissioners' thoughts on changing the Speaker's Forum to October 30th as folks will be away.
I would be fine with that.
How many, if I could ask a question, how many will be able to do the 21st versus the 30th? Will we have quorum on the 21st or no?
Go ahead, Charisma.
So, excuse me, the October 30th is the Business Meeting. So the, so request is based on what President Simmons said. The 21st, we have folks going to conference. And so to ensure that there is quorum, we're asking that the Speaker Forum happens at 5:30 still, but right before the Business Meeting that will then start at 6:00. So yes, there should be quorum at this time.
So we're just changing the time, you said?
The date and time. So you're moving it from October 21st to October 30th, right before the Business Meeting that's scheduled for October 30th.
So because of the absences, we anticipate there will not be quorum on the 21st. However, on the 30th, as Charisma said, that's the Business Meeting, and we should be here. So if everyone is okay with that, I'd like to entertain a motion to move, amend the Speaker's Forum calendar to move the October 21st date to October 30th, so that we can accommodate anyone who would like to speak to the board prior to the Board Business Meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Vice President Malloy, seconded by Commissioner Patterson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And, and we have one name. Charisma, I do want to ask or confirm, if we move it to the 30th, we know the Board Biz, never mind, it's 5:30. It's right there in my face. Don't mind me, thank you. Okay, we had on the calendar the Resolution Process Review. Are we amending that and moving that to another day, to the September 25th Business Meeting? Is that still the case? Okay. He's on Teams this evening. Okay, both Superintendent Rosser, as well as State Monitor Alisea have joined us via Teams this evening. Welcome. Okay, so it looks like we have Resolution Review. And I'm trying to make sense of some of the notes here. The universal pre-K professional development and other work needs to be removed from the packet. It's, so what are these notes telling me, Charisma?
So if you look at the academic packet for 3B on the agenda, on, so on the, what pages? If you go to, it's page 42 if you're looking at the PDF, but on the bottom of the PDF is page 57. That resolution is still going through its workflow and is a placeholder. So as a result, the request is to remove that from the Consent Agenda Packet until it finishes its workflow. So when you all motion, that is the ax.
And that's on page 57, you said?
So it's on, maybe using the PDF is 42, but when you look at the bottom of the PDF, it's page 57. If that makes sense? Nope, so scroll to page 42.
All right, so we're requesting to amend this?
Once you all have discussion about any of the other items, if there's nothing else that needs to be excluded, this is, this is one of the resolutions that is being axed to be removed from the Consent Agenda.
Okay.
So President Simmons, so when you advance the Consent Agenda, you would just say, and it will not include, you know, the resolution on, I guess, page 57 slash 42?
Gotcha. And this is a new, a new thing, I'm used to the resolutions, they're all in this one big sheet now. And I'm used to seeing them kind of separated out. And so I do want to open up the Resolution Review Packet. And again, upon our review, if we don't have questions, the idea is that these resolutions will be moved to the Consent Agenda for voting, official voting at the Board Business Meeting. With that said, opening the packet, do any commissioners have questions, concerns, or thoughts they'd like to express or get clarification on regarding the resolutions? And I see your hand, Commissioner Santiago.
If I, just a quick question about our resolutions around additional pay, curriculum development, extended learning, those ones where we have specific teachers that we are paying, and the hours that we're paying them for, and the rate that we're paying them on. Is a full list on these resolutions of teachers, active teachers? And will they be active teachers the time of this resolution playing out? And while you guys prepare, I'll clarify the reason why I asked that question, because I know in the past, and I believe like a month ago, we had a resolution of retirement or resignations. And there were some names inside of that resolution that were also inside of the other resolution. And so if what we're voting on isn't going to the exact names that's put on the resolution, where does it end up going? Where does the money end up going? If it's not needed, are we kind of, are you guys forced in a place to fill this role, although it may not be needed, and spend money that may not be needed? And so that's why I asked the question, because I know in the past, there's been repeated names of retirements and teachers who have resonated that were on later resolutions for extended learning, curriculum development, or summer classes.
Commissioner Santiago, are you referencing like the placeholder practice? Are you referencing the placeholder practice?
I, yeah, I hear the placeholder practice, but I also know, so last month, there was a specific employee that's now in a whole nother district. And she, her name was on the resolution to be doing the work. So I understand the placeholder, but I know that it puts a interesting, you guys in an interesting place in operations if it's not that person.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure that's what you were asking about. So who would be prepared to respond?
Good evening, Commissioners. Commissioner Santiago, the process for submitting resolutions is on a six to eight week time lag. And so in order for the administration to review those and then submit them for your review, we start eight weeks prior to. So there are times when names are put on the list, and then subsequently, the individual does retire or move to a different district. What happens at that time is that name gets swapped out with another teacher. There is a discussion related to additional pay resolutions that we'll be bringing forth to the board for some additional consideration. But when we are preparing these resolutions, there's a process for internal review and approvals that have to take place. And so that's why you will sometimes see that. Those names are switched with individuals that are working in the district. It doesn't change the pay rate, just to be clear, it doesn't change the pay rate or the amount that's going to be spent. The work is still going to take place.
Thank you.
And the brief thing I'll add is there usually is language to that effect in a resolution that indicates that that could potentially happen.
Thank you. Did you have other, you had some other questions? I know you said additional pay, curriculum, and development.
I listed those out because that's usually where I'm seeing, you know, this at. So thank you for the clarification.
Thank you, Commissioner Santiago. Any other questions or concerns regarding the Resolution Review? Again, once we consent to these resolutions, they will be moved forward to the Board Business Meeting for final vote. There will be no opportunity for discussion. So between now and then, we do have the opportunity to get clarification. We can put questions in the question log or reach out to our administration, our chief, Wilson or what have you, to streamline that communication if you do come up with something. But outside of that, once we get to the Board Business Meeting, they are on the Consent Agenda, and they move forward or what have you, they're voted up or down. So I just want to get that opportunity out. Commissioner Griffin?
Mine is always data-driven and always wanting to know. You stayed here, there's going to be a hundred, I want to make sure I'm looking at the right, right resolutions here. Well, I'm going to tell you where I'm looking at. It's Academic Resolution Number Nine, and it's 154. And just collectively, you say that there's 120 students that will be a part of this. How can we, how do we know that there's going to be a guarantee of those 120 students? Because it starts, it starts on the 26th, right? Or the teachers, how is this going to work? How do we know it's going to be guaranteed 120 students is basically my question. Because in the past, we've had 100, we say 120, and it may be 20. So we're paying money, and then we don't never see the data and outcome. So how's that going to work?
Thank you for your question, Commissioner Griffin. What school are you, are you speaking about? Which school?
It can be in general. There's quite, there's, the one I'm looking at right now is the one for Oasis. And it's 154.
So what we do, so Chief Mascadre took every resolution this week for every school, collected the data from last year to identify how many, how many the resolutions said were going to join, how many actually joined, and what the outcomes were for that. So it's really about the school chief monitoring to make sure that it's being implemented, that kids are showing up. And if they're not showing up, and we did this last year, we'll do a true-up, and we'll close, close out the section if we don't get enough kids. Or we say, listen, if you don't get enough kids, we're going to end up pushing this back out. And more often than not, they do. So as far as the data is concerned, we're on it, we're looking very closely at it to make sure we're fiscally responsible in paying for programs where kids are showing up.
Okay, so, so we are basing it on data from last year, so that data is privy to us?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. We can provide it for every program and school.
Yeah, I would like to see that data and how, that number 120 students, if that's, if that's the case. I would definitely want to see that.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Can you just forward it to whomever? And I would like to see that part of that data from last year and how you got the 120 students.
Will do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Griffin. Any other questions or concerns regarding the academic review resolutions? With none, motion to move the academic resolutions forward to the Board Business Meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Vice President Malloy, seconded by Commissioner Patterson, all in favor?
One second, I'm sorry, President Simmons, with the absence of the resolution identified on page 42.
Give me that language, because I can't tell. The pages are different here, and my mind is not computing.
And Charisma, if I'm, it's page 42 of the PDF, but number 57, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so motion to move the academic resolutions forward to the Board Business Meeting with the exception of page 57.
Page 42.
Page 42.
And it says placeholder on there as well.
And they read placeholder. So with those exceptions, we're moving the rest of them forward. And that's going to be Vice President Malloy and Commissioner Patterson, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Academic resolutions, thank you for that support. Move forward to the Board Business Meeting Agenda. So we're going to move into our Administrative Supports Resolutions. And I want to open the conversation at this time for any questions we have regarding administrative supports. Any resolutions here? With no questions for, would you have a question, Commissioner Santiago?
I just, I guess this is more of an opinion, listen, a question, and I think I could talk about it more during the Business Meeting, but we're giving a lot of, a lot of money to our suburb districts. And I know that, you know, it's a conversation that's not had very often, but I think we have to have discussions as far as how much resources we're giving out. And I know this funding right now is required, so I know that it's required. But with the programs that we have in our suburb districts, there's a huge amount of money in transportation going over that way, services going over that way. And certainly, as we see the financial impacts on this district coming throughout time, I think it's important for us to look at this. I know some of it is required, but have conversations on how do we keep our resources in-house for our district as much as possible in comparison to out. But that's a further discussion for later on, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion around the Administrative Support Resolutions? With none, all those in favor? Please, I'd like to entertain a motion to move the Administrative Support Resolutions forward to the Board Business Meeting.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Santiago, seconded by Vice President Malloy, all those in favor? Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, and now we are looking at the Board of Education Legal and Audit Resolutions. Are we going into those now, or are we going into executive session? Okay, and so at this particular time, this meeting may recess into executive session, closed to the public to discuss proposed pending or current litigation matters leading to the appointment or removal of a particular corporation and/or to receive the advice of General Counsel as permitted by Section 105 of the. of general counsel as permitted by section 105 of the Open Meetings Law. All those in favor of entering into executive session?
Motion.
Oh, sorry, motion to enter into executive session. Thank you, I'm trying to get there.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Griffin.
Second.
Seconded by Vice President Malloy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, moving into executive session, thank you.
Thank you and welcome back. We are back with our work session, board work session for today, September 9th with the Rochester City School District. Currently, we are under Board of Education Legal Audit Resolutions. And at this time, I'd like to open the floor with the independent audit of Oracle for discussion. So I'm going to entertain a motion for the independent article, excuse me, independent audit of Oracle, Resolution 149.
So move.
By Vice President Malloy, seconded by Commissioner Griffin. And this is now open for discussion. So let me preface this with, we recognize that I don't think there's one board member that doesn't want to understand the origin and the evolution of the experience we've had across the district. I don't think there's one commissioner that does not understand or connect with the impact that this experience has had. And so I want to open this discussion so that we can actually move forward with fact finding. And so when we use the word audit, you know, that can sound a little nefarious at times, I want to be sure to express that going into an audit is also an opportunity for learnings. And so if we could open this conversation with questions or concerns or suggestions around language, that would be helpful. So the floor is now open if there are any discussion items. Commissioner Patterson.
Thank you, Madam President. As the present chair of the Audit Committee, since I ran for office, so we'll go way back then, you know, let alone my first year, I've asked for an audit, you know, on R C S D. At that point in time, it was more financial. But now as we see, we were having this issue with Oracle and we just like to know exactly, you know, where, when the issue began, you know, who, was there mismanagement, who oversaw this area, and answer the questions that need to be answered so we can go forward. Because if we don't know what we did wrong, how do we expect not to make those same mistakes in the future? So it isn't, you know, you know, that we're coming after anyone. It's smart business. So again, for me, two things. We talked about not only, you know, an independent fact finding group coming in and performing an audit, but also an internal audit or State Comptroller's Office performing an audit. And I would hope that this board would allow both audits to run side by side. Therefore, the public receives and the district and us as commissioners receive an audit that's true and factual. There's no holes that anyone can poke in it because it's performed by two separate entities. And number two, we're talking about Oracle, but we're forgetting the financial piece to this too. I've requested it. It's nothing that you haven't heard before. There should be also a financial audit. Anytime you're transferring, we'll say, power, you're transferring, you know, you know, what we have, finances, you know, to another superintendent. When you have a large organization, and I say that again, because I worked for the state police, and we performed audits also, a minimum of twice a year. And that's a large entity also. So my thought is, is that we're transferring power to another individual, we're transferring that to a new superintendent. This audit should have been done prior to any new superintendent coming into the seat. Therefore, he knows exactly, you know, where we at, where we're at as far as our, our finances and as far as the district in a whole. And he doesn't have to answer for, you know, things that happened prior to his tenure or his taking the seat. So again, for clarification purposes, I'm asking that this board vote for a side by side audit to be performed. And not only this audit to be performed on Oracle, but also a financial audit be done. I hope we can bring that to the table, have adult conversations and, you know, reach a majority vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Patterson. Commissioner Griffin?
Yes. To Commissioner Patterson's point, this is something that I feel that should have been done some time ago. When I came in myself, I also, we, Commissioner Patterson asked for forensic audit, it was denied. And it affects the students, the administration, and everyone in this district when we have to put time into something that could have been resolved. The only people that were cheating and robbing are the students in Rochester City School District. We could have were cheating and robbing are the students in Rochester City School District. We could have been halfway through this when he asked about Oracle over and over and over again, even when I didn't have knowledge about what really Oracle was, in reference to the in-depth and the debt that we were going into, into this, into this payroll with Oracle. I think that it would be strategic for us to make sure we are definitely auditing every part of this project in order to get the answers we need. If we don't do that, we are cheating ourselves. I think that having a committee over finance and getting rid of it is not something we should do, should have done, because I also feel that we need to have oversight over the finances. And that is, that is something that could be an actual downfall for us, getting rid of some of the committees that have oversight so we can see what's going on. That is why strategically these committees were put in place. I do understand that we have people that are here, CDC, to help us, but we, to me, it was moving too fast. And I think that if we had the autonomy as commissioners to have oversight of some of these things, we could see exactly what was going on and be a little bit more helpful. Again, I totally agree with Commissioner Patterson. I feel that we need to do an in-depth audit, forensic on this, on the district, and just get it all done at once so we can address the needs of these students and move forward. We need to hold people accountable for the actions that have taken place in this district from the onset of Oracle up to present. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Griffin. Commissioner LeBron?
Yeah, I just want to say it's our job to oversee the finances, whether there's a committee or not. It's literally one of our main roles. And I just want to point out that at the August 28th Board Business Meeting, myself, Commissioner Santiago, and Commissioner Elliott did try to introduce a resolution. Tonight, I also want to pose a question for legal to clarify on walk-on resolutions, and whether it requires two-thirds of the board vote for it to actually have passed. That's related to another resolution that the board voted on with suspending the rules with members of four, Robert's Rule says two-thirds of the body. So I want to pose that question now for that, for clarity. And unfortunately, that resolution was calling for a, for the state auditors to come in. And that is who we reflect to as an independent audit. I have no desire to spend more taxpayer dollars on this issue to further explore what happened when there are already a taxpayer entity funded entity that oversees justice audits. And so because that resolution was not allowed to be walked on, or even voted or discussed, even for amendment of language, on September 3rd, myself, Commissioner, again, Commissioner LeBron, Santiago, and Commissioner Elliott penned a letter to the State Comptroller's Office, essentially whistleblowing and asking them to come in and audit. And so I will not be supporting this audit. I don't want to spend any more dollars on the issue. I certainly want more accountability and state eyes on this issue. I'm not confident internally that this can be fully flushed out. We have no data points up until this notion of how many people have been impacted, what that looks like, and what the future holds. And finally, I'd want to, I want to clarify that the call for an audit on a program that had not yet been officially implemented would be a premature audit to call for. And that, as hopefully the states, when they do come in, they're able to uncover that this was a foreseeable issue and a crisis that could have been avoided altogether. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner LeBron. Commissioner Santiago?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that the work has to be done, whether it's through the audit or not. I would say that I 100% support this if the New York State Audit Department and Office does not decide to continue with their investigation, but I do not see the reason why. Having a third party that we will pay for when there's already a pending possible investigation starting, one, that affects as far as how much money we're putting out. But also, secondly, that will affect the superintendent's have to answer to two audit investigations at the same time, which will take away from the time that could be spent on focusing on our district and what's needed there. And so I believe that I would support this if the State Audit Department decides not to continue the investigation, but I think it might be important to wait on this until the Audit Department decides whether or not they'll investigate. One, for the amount of time and effort that two investigations at the same time will take on to our district and our administration. And two, to not waste money for an investigation that might possibly be on its way. So I will support this if the State Audit Department decides not to investigate. Other than that, I think that this should wait until we get a response from them. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Commissioner Santiago. Commissioner Malloy, or Vice President Malloy?
Thank you. Just similar to some of the, some of what my colleagues have expressed, I support the unanimous calls that we've had for a forensic audit to be completed in this matter. So that's all I have to say. I support it.
Thank you, Vice President Malloy. Yeah, I just want to end with, and we'll also see if anyone has any statements from administration or have you, but, you know, and I do hear the point around prematurely calling for an audit. And I think when we look at the origin of Oracle from 2021, there was a year 2022. And so it started at 12 million, but at some point before 2025, that thing went from 12 million, and then all of a sudden, it was 20 million, and then it was 30 million, then 40 million. And somehow, way before now, those things came in. So I can see why there might have been question around, wait a minute, how are we getting here? And that was before this particular year. And so I do recognize that. I do want to respectfully express that, yes, in fact, there was a, the idea or the question to walk on a resolution previously. And as stated in the previous meeting, due to the, you know, said in the open meeting, there were some legal implications. We did not want to get into that without a full understanding. Many of the commissioners did not have an understanding of what the resolution entailed. And I think I received it the next day through the media. So that, that was what made it a little more difficult. But at the end of the day, I think we all want to get to the same understanding, which is out of concern for our employees. And if we concern ourselves with that, and concern ourselves with the business of the district, we can actually find ourselves seeing eye to eye. Commissioner Santiago, I do agree with what you expressed. I don't want to place our superintendent or administration in a position where they are trying to put out two different fires, right? And so I heard this analogy, and I love it, and I keep using it, because this particular situation literally likened itself to a fire. And when I consider that visual of people trying to get people out of a fire, and get that under control, yes, you want to know how the fire started, who started it, where did, where did we go wrong? But I don't think trying to figure that out while the fire is actually happening is the way to go. And so there's a certain sense of urgency that certainly is needed, but there is a sense of steadiness that leaders present. And I think we can find that. So with that said, this particular resolution, after seeing the other one, and I recognize there was like the payroll piece, I do see that this resolution would call for a comprehensive overall look. I do agree, however, that if this resolution moves forward on some level, and it, and we find that there's going to be some parallel efforts going on through the state or what have you, that we can then make a different decision, and we can come back together as a board to make a responsible decision in that regard. So without belaboring that, I would like to move forward with all in favor of Resolution 149?
Aye.
Nay. Any opposed? Okay, the ayes have it, and the resolution carries with the opportunity to come back. Oh, you know what? Shoot, I should undo it because there was an amendment I wanted to offer up. So can, can I, how do I moonwalk that thing back to me?
I just want to record that on the first vote, I'm a nay. I'm going to be a nay on the next one, too, but I'm ready, I'm ready to go. So I also want to acknowledge-
Ask legal, and this may not, you can redirect me. So we are recognizing that we don't want to put too much stress on for the same thing. The superintendent, for example, this particular audit to actually happen may have to go into an RFP process or what have you. If I was interested in him being able to identify individuals to work with to support those efforts, procurement, for example, to identify and all those things, does that language need to be explicitly outlined in this particular resolution, or?
So if that is your concern, President Simms, I think that might be already covered in the resolution. There is a clause that says, "The Board of Education hereby directs superintendent to procure the services of a qualified independent third-party firm to conduct comprehensive audit." Said procurement shall be consistent with requirements of contracting for professional services policy 6741. So therefore, it would go through, the board already has a policy on-
On how that process works.
How that needs to work, and how the procurement should, should operate.
Okay, because it was modified a bit, so that I got lost there. Thank you.
But to answer your question, there could, there's a reconsideration, there's a reconsideration option, but obviously it's not a path that we need to go through.
No, this policy language is helpful. Thank you. It just changed a little bit from what I had. So thank you for entertaining that conversation. Moving forward, I want to entertain a motion for resolutions, for Resolution 150.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Griffin.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Malloy. All in favor of Resolution 150?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Oh, sorry. And, well, no, this is, this is a, this is, I'm sorry, Chrisma, did you need some? Okay, so you got, you got us recorded? Okay. And so then, this one, though, I do need to entertain a motion to waive the 48-hour rule for Resolutions 151 and 152.
So moved.
Moved by Vice President Malloy, seconded by Commissioner Griffin. All in favor of raving the 48-hour submission rule?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? With that said, all in favors of, I'm sorry, entertaining a motion for Resolutions 151 and 152.
So moved.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Griffin, seconded by Commissioner Patterson. All in favor of Resolutions 151 and 152?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution carries. Okay, at this time, we have the Medicaid compliance report. I believe that's available on board docs for review. So to our listening public, you can familiarize yourself with that report. Commissioners, if you have questions or what have you, we do have the board question log for that. And we don't need another executive session, do we?
No.
And so the next policy items for review will be Policies 0110, 4526, 4532, 4730, and 4750. And if you're looking to provide feedback, you can visit us at www.rcsd.k12.org/policy. With that said, motion to exit the meeting, or end the meeting?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Griffin, seconded by Vice President Malloy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Good night.